Carefree Conversations Friday the 14th, 9 to 11, so please come on by. I'll be with Councilmember Clint Miller and Sheila Elmarosa. Second, on February 12th, we have another garden seminar, and this one's pretty good. It's called "Living with Urban Wildlife." We have someone from Arizona Game and Fish tell us how to coexist with coyotes and javelinas, and how to keep your pets safe. So it's a good topic. So that's February 12th, Saturday morning, 9:30 here in the Town Council chambers.
So that has to be a different date, if February 14th?
Oh, February 8th. So I'm sorry. Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Yep, exactly. Thank you. And also a current event, this falls under, just to let you know that if you drive in on Wampum, the landscaping on Wampum, parallel to the bank, has been improved, and that's all thanks to Councilmember Clint Miller. So he worked with the bank, worked with Desert Foothills Landscaping, and for years it's looked terrible. If you look out there now, there's some Texas sage and a couple of other things, so it looks nice, something we can be proud of when folks drive in on Wampum and come into our town. And lastly, the all Porsche Grand Display, Porsche Car Show will be here on a Sunday morning, so it doesn't disturb our businesses very much. We just passed the street closure from 7 till, I believe, 2 PM, and they'll be out there. And I don't think we have any representatives here from, or do we? So Dennis, I'd invite you to come, if you have something to say, you're welcome to come up here and just mention what you have going on, and just keep it brief, please.
Well, I'd just like to say the club appreciates the hospitality of Carefree. We've been here two years, and Steve has been great to work with, better than any other show I've ever put on in 20 years. We really appreciate it. The setting is great, and the equipment we have to use with the AV system and microphones, put a flag out there, we do the National Anthem to start. Just a casual day, we do give awards, but we didn't open any doors or anything like that. We just pick three cars from each of four or five groups and give those away. So pretty much it's just a kind of a fancy show and shine. People come out with their car, they see their friends, they get to see some cars they don't see, and it's a nice day. Everybody in the club seems to like it, and the people who come to attend like it. The proceeds after expenses go to Mesa Community College for their automotive technology program for scholarships. So we thank you for allowing us to do this one more time.
In fact, this is the third time, I think.
Yeah.
It's fun, it's fun just to walk around. If you don't know anything about cars, it's just fun to bring your dog. It's free, have a good time.
You'll see some very early Porsches there, you'll see some Outlaws, that's what they're called, it's becoming more popular, where you take an early Porsche 356, the little soap dish looking ones upside down, and you put a big engine in it, and you make it look way different than it should, and it goes way faster than it should, but they'll have some of those. And we'll have some, we're gonna park this year by color. So we're gonna park the, what we call the icon colors, viper green, blood orange, so forth, and they'll be the first ones after the old cars, and then red, white, and blue for patriotic, and gray and black, and whatever. But it'll be a lot of fun. Thanks a lot for letting us come again, thanks for working with Steve, and we appreciate it.
We're glad to have you. Thank you.
So item number seven, discussion and consideration of Resolution 2025-02, authorizing the mayor to execute mutual aid agreement between the town and Rural Metro Fire Department to share resources based upon terms of the agreement. Mr. Neese.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Joining us tonight is Chief Tally, as well as the new battalion chief for Rural Metro. Chief Tally will give some color commentary to this mutual aid agreement, but more importantly, update the council on the recent merger between Brindley Fire Service and Rural Metro. To give you a little background on this issue, during the last renewal period for our Rural Metro contract, which is a five-year contract, we're approximately three years into that five-year contract, representatives of Rural Metro, and some of the council members might recall this, at public meetings stated that our equipment would never leave Carefree. After that contract was renewed, the town invested in a new fire truck and brush truck and associated equipment. This new equipment has been used to support Rural Metro service areas outside of the town, so Rural Metro has service areas in County Islands that are purely subscription. And our fire truck has been called to assist in efforts in those respective areas. To ensure the town is not left without timely emergency resources, assets are protected, and the town is indemnified, I requested a mutual aid agreement with the Rural Metro Fire Department. So this graphic illustrates a little bit about the geography up here. The center dot, or the centered star is our respective firehouse. There's two engine companies in there. 821 is the Carefree Engine Company, and 825 is the Rural Metro Engine Company that came from the west side, located here off of Cave Creek Road, after Cave Creek went to automatic aid, and Daisy Mountain took over that station. So that relocated to our current station. That station, or, excuse me, that engine responds to the County Islands primarily in and around Carefree, but also supports the residents of the town of Carefree. There is another station to the east of Scottsdale off of the Rio Verde Drive, that is about 164th Street and Rio Verde Drive, and there's an engine company called 826 located there. So there are a series of County Islands that are located to the north of Carefree, to the northeast of Carefree, the Rio Verde corridor to the east of Scottsdale, as well as the County Islands to the south and southwest of both Carefree and Cave Creek. These are the areas that 825 services, but sometimes when there's a structural fire, they will call for assistance, and that assistance would be from 821, our respective fire engine. So the terms of the agreement focus on response times internal to Carefree. Obviously, if our equipment is leaving Carefree, we want to ensure the residents of Carefree that there will be no impact to the level of service. So that provision is incorporated in there. Rural Metro would have to move up 826 into or near Carefree to ensure that the level of service is not compromised. If the town equipment is also used in these Rural Metro subscription areas outside the town of Carefree, the town will be reimbursed by Rural Metro at a rate of $595 an hour, and that's rounded up to the next hour. So if it's an hour and five minutes, it's rounded up to two hours. That's the state mutual aid rate, and those rates will increase with any percentage increases that we have on the existing contract, and any percentage increases that we have on any new contract in the future with Rural Metro. So there'll be an escalator on that per hourly fee. The insurance indemnification requirements mirror the town's master contracts requirement, so regardless of whether they're servicing a call in Carefree or outside Carefree, there are insurance requirements, and they are similar to what's being posted within the town of Carefree, so that we know that we're in a neutral position, it doesn't adversely impact us. And then finally, the agreement runs parallel with the master contract for services, and rates adjust, once again, with any percentages of the existing or future contract for services with Rural Metro. So the agenda item before you is approval of Resolution 2025-02, which simply authorizes the mayor to enter into this mutual aid agreement between Rural Metro Fire Department based upon the respective terms of that agreement. Be glad to address any questions that the council might have, and Commander, excuse me, Captain Tally can also address any questions.
Okay. Well, come on up, Captain. Chief, so I would first thank you both for working this out. I think it's critical that we cover our truck, and you've been very gracious in coming up with an agreement that works for everybody, so thank you for that.
Yes.
And I would just say, any questions from the council?
Pretty clear, yeah.
Okay, so I think we're pretty clear on the agreement. Maybe you could just share some information about the Brindley acquisition, just kind of bring everyone up to date and where things stand.
Very good. One thing I do want to touch on the mutual aid agreement, this agreement is not foreign to us. We have these similar types of agreements, whether it's a verbal handshake or written agreements throughout the valley with all of our other neighboring departments. So to bring this same type of agreement to the town of Carefree is the right thing to do for everybody across the board, and we're, you know, we want to be that neighborhood fire department, and we're gonna, you know, we're gonna act on that. So if there's no other questions about the mutual aid agreement, I'll touch on our new acquisition from Brindley Mountain.
Yeah, please, thank you.
Okay. So Brindley Mountain, if, for those who don't know, they currently, their, the majority of their business revolves around used fire apparatus. They buy it used, they refurbish it, and they resell it. Mr. Wessel, who is the Board of Directors and owns Brindley Mountain, he also has other interests and other aspects of the fire service, whether it be fleet mechanics, other businesses that also deal with used and new apparatus. He has quite the diverse portfolio, and he also has a small fire department within his portfolio there in Alabama. So the fire service in itself is not new to him, but he's always had that eagerness to have a bigger part of the pie, if you will. So when Rural Metro came up for sale, and GMR announced that they were willing to let us go, he found a business partner that he works with through Southern Equity, and they put together a plan and a business model for us to survive on and grow on. So in a sense, Rural Metro is gonna be taking back to the roots of being a standalone fire department, we're not gonna be owned or controlled by anybody else. Our leadership that we currently have from Chief Mike Ragone, who is the head of all of Rural Metro Fire, he's gonna be our fire chief across the nation, and he's gonna cover all of our different sister companies from Capstone Fire, Specialty Fire, Rural Metro Community Fire, and any other new business that they get us into. They are looking at new markets in the Midwest and back east, and a lot of it revolves around volunteer fire departments. So we're anxious to see what kind of new business models they come up with and how they're gonna make us grow. They have committed to investing equity into our department to bring us on top, to get us the best equipment, to get us the best training, be competitive wage-wise in all of our markets, no matter where we're at in the US. So this is a good thing for Rural Metro. At the field level right now, we're not seeing any changes because everything is still the same. We have a temporary service agreement through about the middle of May with AMR to get us transitioned from the AMR/GMR umbrella over, so we're self-sufficient on our own, and then once that transition's done, we'll be completely separated from the AMR/GMR family. So we're looking forward to it, everybody's excited. As a matter of fact, I'm flying to Atlanta tomorrow to look at brand-new fire trucks and see what kind of new capital equipment we can bring into our department. And this is all because of our Brindley, our Brindley family that's bringing us under their, under their wing.
So that means the green truck that's in there now may be a shiny new truck sooner than later?
Very well may be.
Okay.
Very well may be. And just, just kind of another side note, we have some properties out in the southwest County Island for a new station, for a station 825. As soon as we get past this Brindley transition and we get the green light to start looking for new stations, we need a new station up north here, we need one out west, and we need three down in the Santana Valley. So we're ready to grow and bust at the seams, we just gotta give the green light so we can start moving on some of our growth.
So my understanding is the Brindley acquisition acquired the fire portion of Rural Metro?
Correct.
And so the ambulance part of the old structure that was owned by AMR is still owned by AMR?
Correct.
So how are we handling that here in Carefree?
So unfortunately, Rural Metro Fire didn't have a say in us being able to keep our ambulances. GMR, the parent company, said, "We don't want any competition in our markets," so they were able to keep our CON, which is a certificate of necessity issued by the Department of Health Services, and there was no way for us to challenge that. However, there's a lot of things we can do in the future to secure our own CON, to bring transports back to our service areas, and especially here in the town of Carefree, this is a discussion that we can have at some point. If the town wants to have their own CON, have their own ambulance, that's, that is an option, but there's a lot of work that has to go into it, a lot of studies, a lot of data gathering, but in the end, you would secure an ambulance that would be dedicated to the town and owned by the town.
So right now, there's an ambulance call, Rural Metro personnel go on the call?
Correct.
In our town?
Yeah. So what we did, we were able to, a handshake agreement with AMR, that this is their CON, they cover it. They don't necessarily have the staffing or understand how we run our business up here, so they're allowing us to staff their ambulance with our personnel. That way, other than the billboard change on the ambulance, you're still getting Rural Metro firefighters to every call in the town.
Okay. So that's, that's good news. And so the vehicle says AMR on it now, is that because the other one's out to get repaired, or is it just the way it's gonna be?
So, and actually, it's gonna change again. I just got word today, because AMR has several different ambulance names under their umbrella, they have AMR, they have Lifeline Ambulance, they have ABC Ambulance, and I think they actually have a Rural Metro ambulance, not Rural Metro Fire, but Rural Metro ambulance. They move around to help satisfy CON requirements, and we'll get the same ambulance back that was here, but it's gonna be rebranded as a Lifeline Ambulance.
Okay, well, I think from our point of view, as long as it gets to where it needs to go is the important thing.
Yeah. And to confuse things, they're gonna have Rural Metro Fire t-shirts on and driving in a Lifeline ambulance, but...
Excellent. Okay, excellent. Very good. Other questions from the council?
I have a question. So you said that you have an agreement with AMR for the next six months to keep the ambulance in our bay?
No, not the ambulance, just the transition us out from underneath their IT, their HR, their, all of their processes, so we get stood up on our own. That ambulance is gonna stay with us as long as we have the contract in Carefree.
Okay. And so where, how will dispatch work?
Dispatch, we, we will now become a subscriber to the AMR Dispatch Center, and dispatch will not change in any shape or form. The only thing that I may, I have a good working relationship with the AMR managers, and hopefully I can keep that seamlessly moving forward, but they could at some point decide that they don't want to provide the information that town is requesting. But if, if that happens, I'll let everybody know ahead of time, and I don't think it's gonna happen, I don't think we'll see any changes, and I continually meet with them to help improve their dispatch times, so...
So even though our, so AMR has a CON for our area?
Correct.
And once our contract is up with you going through renewal, what, they will continue to have the CON, is there a time limit on the CONs?
No.
Okay, so they'll continue to have the CON?
Correct.
And then if we wanted to have a CON just for our town, we would have to go to the state and ask them to carve out Carefree from the AMR CON?
Not carve out, it's more of an overlap.
Okay.
So right now, there are overlapping CONs.
Right.
I think Maricopa Ambulance has an overlapping CON that covers the town also, but they're not a primary. AMR holds that primary overlapping.
Okay.
And we would have to come in and justify the reason why AMR and Maricopa Ambulance aren't doing well enough up here to issue another overlapping CON.
Okay, so we'd have to go through a period of time with not having an ambulance in our bay after our contract expires to make, to see if they actually provide the service that we expect?
So AMR has to provide the service because they're the primary CON holder, but they don't necessarily have to staff an ambulance within the town?
Right, right.
Correct.
Right. But once our contract is up, there will not be an ambulance in our bay?
That's, that's an item that we'll have to negotiate when we get closer to the contract time, how that's gonna work. We're gonna do everything we can to keep an ambulance dedicated to the town.
But if we, if we have to prove that they're not doing their job in order to get a CON in our bay, ambulance in our bay, then we can't really do that if we don't test it out to see if they actually can do the job?
Yeah. Unfortunately, there's a lot of moving parts with all this that we can't really, you know, dive into tonight, but there's, there is, there is gonna be protection within the town, and we're gonna have an ambulance. When we get towards the contract, we'll have to bring AMR into the mix and figure out how all the pieces are gonna fit.
So two questions on that. Currently, the way that the arrangement is right now until our contract is up, are the calls being handled as they did before, where when a call comes in, fire truck's going out, ambulance is going out? That's not gonna change during this timeframe?
Correct.
Can't we, I would think that there could be a time period, well, if we know it's gonna expire on this date, and we're looking to do a CON for ourselves, we could start it months earlier?
We could start it now.
Okay, for that process?
Right.
So when there's done, there's not gonna be a gap?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
And we, you know, this is, again, this is a topic for another night, because it's a very deep one, and there's a lot of moving parts to it, but if this is something the town's interested in, I will get together with Chief Saul, and we'll start pushing this now, if this is the direction we wanna go.
Yeah, so if we had a CON, we would have to supply the vehicle, or not?
Correct, yeah.
And we would have to supply, we, the town, we'd have to supply the personnel?
Well, that could all fall under the contract. You can contract with us for the vehicle and the personnel. It's, there's, there's a lot of different ways we can mold this.
Okay. Other, other questions or comments? I do have one other question.
Sure.
So if I look at, well, a couple, two things. One, on dispatchers, I'm glad you're still working with the dispatchers that we're working with before, because if you look at the monthly reports we get, for a while, they were going through a learning curve?
Right.
And their time periods were pretty long. But if you look at the reports recently, they're, actually, they're in spec, they're meeting their numbers, so that's, so I'm glad to hear you're still working with them. And then, secondly, if I look at the reports, on those calls where you exceed six minutes, often it's because of gates.
Correct.
And gates going to HOAs. So would it be possible for Rural Metro to kind of like write a general memo or something that we could share with our communities that have gates and say, "Hey, you know, this is a potential problem, time is critical," and you, there's technology out there, I don't know what it is, but optical technology?
Right.
Some Bluetooth or line-of-sight signaling that they could install that works on your trucks, and people can get in quicker?
Yeah.
So, I mean, that would be excellent.
Yeah.
We would share that with all the communities.
And I'll have our fire marshal start, Ryan Wick, I'll have him start working on that, and we'll start just getting to the HOA meetings for those types of discussions, but absolutely.
Okay, great, thank you. And the other thing, I would applaud Rural Metro for their FireWise program. So we've talked about it, we talked about it in the fall, and there's some more activity, more classes coming up.
Correct.
There's one on...
Should be February 18th in, in...
February 18th?
Here, in this room.
Here in the Town Council chamber, it's an all-day class about basically how to, why don't you tell us what it is?
So, real quick, for those who don't know, FireWise is what we call a community risk reduction program, and it's based around the community actually getting involved, taking ownership of the program, with the understanding that it doesn't matter how many fire departments we have, it doesn't matter how many fire trucks or how many firemen, fires like what we just saw in LA, the Maui Fire, those are conflagrations, so there's not any fire department that's gonna stop it. But when you see those single homes that are still standing untouched, it's because those individuals took the time on their own to fireproof their house, or make them ember-resistant. During a wind, a wind event will carry sparks and embers, and they'll get lodged under the eaves, under debris, under the patio, dry and outdated patio furniture, those are how homes burn up in those events. If we can get everybody to do their own due diligence and, you know, manage their own property so it's more fire-resistant, everybody's gonna win in the long run, and that's what FireWise does. We teach you how to manicure your vegetation, how to make your home safe, take whatever fire prevention you need to get it all done. And these classes is what's gonna teach everybody to do it. The fire department is here to empower people and give them the education to do it, but they, at the end of the day, it's the citizens of the town that are gonna have to do it. And we're just here for the support, the knowledge, and be an asset, and a tool to them to get it done.
Yeah, so that February 18th class, folks have to sign up first, and I think Rural Metro's gonna push out some kind of a sign-up sheet or something?
So the Department of Forestry and Fire Management, they're gonna, they're gonna publish the sign-up sheet, and we'll get that out as soon as they get that, get that to us.
Okay, and as soon as we have it, we'll share it in the community. So it's an all-day class, but you'll, you'll learn a lot.
Yeah.
And then on March 1st, in the firehouse, in the conference room, there'll be another FireWise meeting, so it's like an hour long, just like we've done before.
Right.
Gee Pullman has done it, he may be doing that one. It's a great opportunity for your HOA to come in and just get a taste of it, and encourage them to become certified, or at least get their act together, so everything is safer.
Right. And at the, at a minimum, come learn for yourself on what you need to do. It's better if we have the community involved, because, you know, the more you empower the masses, the more masses are gonna join, but if anything, just come get the knowledge so you understand what, what we're trying to do and how we wanna make everybody safe.
And I think your, Rural Metro's at every one of our farmer's markets coming up. You have a table there, and another opportunity for people to come out and talk to our firemen.
Yeah. And we're always, the, the firehouse is always open during normal business hours, seven days a week. If you wanna just stop by and ask their own questions, come on by, the guys will be happy to talk to you.
Exactly. Okay. Anything else for the chief? Okay, well, thank you very much, you do a great job, and it's a pleasure to work with you.
Thank you. Have a good night.
All right. So now I would entertain a motion to approve Resolution 2025-02, a resolution of the mayor and town council of the town of Carefree, Arizona, to approve and authorize the mayor to execute a mutual aid agreement between the town of Carefree and Rural Metro Fire Department.
Motion to approve Resolution 2025-02, a resolution of the mayor and town council of the town of Carefree, Arizona, to approve and authorize the mayor to execute a mutual aid agreement between the town of Carefree and Rural Metro Fire Department.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Passing unanimously. Okay, thank you, and thank you to Rural Metro. Item number eight, approval of Resolution 2025-03, authorizing the town administrator to, to enter into a professional service agreement with the law offices of Kevin Berger, PLLC, to provide public defender services at the Cave Creek, Carefree Cave Creek Consolidated Court. So Judge, I invite you to come up if you have anything to say about this item. Thank you for being here.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the town council.
Thank you. Thank you, mayor, vice mayor, members of the town council, and the town. Yes, we're asking you to approve this agreement. It's just formalizing a contract with Mr. Berger, who is currently our public defender, provides public defender services for the court. We are asking for an increase in the amount of his pay in terms of his hourly rate, basically making it commensurate with the town prosecutor. And so, we're asking you to approve this. Mr. Berger has been with us for quite some time now. He's doing an excellent job. We want to continue to have him provide those services for us.
Okay. Any questions or comments? Can you, the numbers are in the...
Yes.
I think it was like $100 per hour or something.
Correct.
So, what was it before?
It was basically in the $70 to $75 an hour range. So, we're just bringing it up to the same level and a level that's pretty much expected, I would say, across Maricopa County in terms of compensation, especially for our town because in our court, as you're all aware, we're a little bit further out. We don't have the volume that other courts do. So, many times, people who are engaged in public service or public defender contracts have the advantage of volume and getting paid on a per-case basis and things of that nature. Here, Mr. Berger, basically, I can give you, for last year, he had a total of 11 cases. So, we just want to continue to engage his services. And so, that's why we're asking for this formal contract to be adopted.
Okay. Well, thank you for the explanation, Judge. Anything else from the council? Okay. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
So, I would entertain a motion to approve Resolution 2025-03, authorizing the town administrator to enter into a professional services agreement with the law offices of Kevin Berger, PLLC, to provide public defender services at the Carefree Cave Creek Consolidated Court.
Motion to approve Resolution 2025-03, a resolution of the mayor and town council of the town of Carefree, Arizona, authorizing the town administrator to contract public defender services for the Carefree Cave Creek Consolidated Court.
Any other comments? So, hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passing unanimously. Thank you. Thank you, Judge. Thanks for coming.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Item number 10, we have two call-to-the-public slips. Those wishing to address the council need not request permission in advance. The public may address the council on matters not on the agenda. At the conclusion of an open call to the public, individual members of the public body may respond to criticism made by those who have addressed the public body, may ask staff to review a matter, direct staff to study the matter, reschedule the matter for further consideration and decision, discussion, and decision at a later date, or may ask that a matter be put on a future agenda. However, the council may not discuss or take legal action at this time, so please limit your comments to no more than three
John Trainer, 24-year Carefree resident. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Since this is the first time I've seen you in person this year, as a group, I want to wish you a happy new year, a little late, but better than never, and a productive new year to you all. In a recent town email, we were informed of art in public places. I mean no disrespect to the artists of work who's being shown in the Carefree Hampton Inn. Nevertheless, in the years of its existence, I have never heard the word beloved used to describe that establishment. I've heard many other words, but not that one. Moving on. Words are important and facts matter. So, in a similar vein to my prior point, I believe the phrase "town leadership" was repeatedly misused in the updated town council strategy plan, which was approved at the last meeting. When I inquired who wrote the document, I was told it was done in conjunction with a consultant. I believe, as most residents probably do, that the mayor and council, who are elected by resident voters, comprise town leadership. All others are employees hired by actual town leadership to perform their jobs. They are not on equal footing. Not only do facts matter, but perception also matters. Any individual council member who engages with the public elsewhere, for instance, at the post office, can give the misperception that they speak for the entire council. The appropriate forum to provide individual insights or points of view, I lost my point of view, would seem to be an official council meeting, or ultimately, during those informal Friday conversations with the mayor and council members at the farmer's market. We have not been in election mode since last August. That election is long over. Perhaps campaigning should end until election season in 2026. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay. Mr. George Nelson?
There's always one. Mr. Mayor, although you did not answer questions tonight, we expect the following three questions to be answered and put on the March Town Hall agenda. The online salary benefit report is not transparent. It's listed by group. We need to know what each employee is paid, including salary benefit package. We also want to know what in 2024 has been paid for consultants and lawyers. We also want to know, did it cost our taxpayers more than $30,000 to defend your reputations? We make the payments. It's our information. I trust it will not be necessary to file a Freedom of Information Act to get the answers. Suggestion: Get recognition. Model Carefree as the example of what happens when you bring common sense, efficiency, and innovation to local government. Neither the salary comps that you pay your consultants to hear what you want to hear, nor claims of employees being overworked, have any merit in Carefree. Perspective: The Arizona governor's salary is $95,000. The $200,000 compensation you authorized to pay our administrator is more than what 42 states are paying their governors. It's also more than the $174,000 U.S. senator's salary. This salary is for a town of 3,600, mostly part-time, no schools, virtually bolted out on only 8.5 miles. His salary is just a tip. The salary benefit budget has exploded to more than 2.1 million. Town operating expenses worse. Mr. Mayor, how did a non-resident $200,000 administrator convince you and the council to propose a property tax, approve a Hampton Inn that is a daily insult to our image, and give us a plus $35 million water project bill that benefits less than 25% of our residents? Make the difference. Significantly reduce expenses by shrinking the number of Town Hall employees while covering, by converting many positions to part-time. Consider Carefree's qualified semi-and-retired residents that will welcome working in Town Hall for less pay with a lot more concern. If Carefree operated with the efficiency and mentality of a small town, we would not have had to have a private resident go out and fight the fight to raise the money for a park. Town Hall would have the assets and want to do things that benefited the residents instead of feeding a bureaucracy that time has come and long gone. Finally, my elected officials, your electorate overwhelmingly rejected your property tax. And like all of America, we mandate the need for common sense, efficiency, and Doge in every corner of government. We expect you to deliver the same for Carefree. For those that want to support this message, until KeepCarefreeCarefree.org is up, you can reach me at GPNI@AOL.com. Thank you very much for your time.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Jan Neal?
Good evening, mayor and town council. And I was just looking at my phone because something occurred to me. Is, apparently, there was a meeting with a group at the Boulders, I don't know whether it was BMAC or so, that you presented. And I saw the slides and, as I recall, it said that the CVS was possibly going to be occupied by Rare Earth Gallery? So, when were we going to find out about that? I had never heard that. And I was like shocked because, you know, I know we want to make sure that we have occupancy with our buildings and so forth. So, if you can, I know you're not supposed to comment, but I think it would be helpful for us to understand when there are vacant buildings and there are plans for businesses to move into it. So, anything you could share would be appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you. Ariane Buser?
Hi, everyone. Hi, council. Nice to see you all again. I apologize for being late. You guys went really fast through the agenda, so I'm sorry. So, I just wanted to come and, oh, first of all, Ariane Buser, Carefree resident. I just wanted to come and speak very quickly in support of CarefreePark.org. This is something that's near and dear to my heart. And the reason I wanted to bring it up today is that last week, I had the opportunity of going to a screening of Green Fire, which was a documentary about Aldo Leopold. Now, I hadn't heard of the man prior to this documentary, but it was really inspiring. He was one of the nation's first conservationalists, and he really lived by the ideology of land ethic. And I think as we look around and we see all of the development that is happening right, like in our very, very proximity to Carefree, I have to wonder, what is our land ethic? What is our responsibility to try and save the beautiful 48 acres that is literally half a mile from town? I really want to impress upon the residents of Carefree that it is our duty and resident as residents to help preserve the beautiful Sonoran Desert for all residents, so visitors and residents alike. This is a part of our legacy. We should be proud in trying to save this land. We should take every single opportunity we can to make this a reality. And I also want to point out that having a park in town, we don't have a park. I understand that Carefree Botanical Garden, it is really beautiful, but it's not a park. This park would be half a mile up the road, accessible. This is the last piece of accessible land, and it would be available for all residents and visitors alike to enjoy. And I really just wanted to impart upon people how important that having a park in town would be to the health and wellness of the residents and visitors. We could, you know, everyone could enjoy it. It would help bring business to our town. It would help bring visitors to our town. And it would allow residents to have a safe place to walk and take their dogs and things like that, and also to enjoy the Sonoran Desert. If you go up, not even far, but Windmell and Stagecoach, they are developing that land. Bartlett Lake Dam Road and Cave Creek Road, they have purged that beautiful desert and are putting up houses. Now, they're going to do 30 homes just right, I think, northeast of Windmell, so right on the other side of the 48 acres. If we do not save this land, no one will. It will be bulldozed. We will have more houses, more congestion. We do not, as a town, I don't think a lot of the residents want that. Why did you move to Carefree? Please ask yourself that. I know I moved here because of the proximity to the Sonoran Desert, the animals that come through here, the beautiful flora and fauna. And you know what? It deserves to be protected because unless we do something about it to try and make this acquisition a reality, no one else will. And we will have a developer out there plowing down all of the flora and fauna, destroying the homes for the animals. And may I remind you again that there are over 200 old-growth Swaro cactus that live in that piece of land and is home to many animals that basically will be kicked out if we tear it down. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. So, I have no more slips. That closes call to the public. Item number 11, I would entertain a motion for adjournment.
I move that we adjourn?
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Passing unanimously. Thank you all very much.